Evening. Today is April 20th, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM. And I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Further and further every meeting, you know, it hit the wall pretty soon. Clerk Posey, we please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusamano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, just as it indicates on the current agenda, the consent item 5E was moved from new business item 15. Also, there's a proposed add-on item number 21 under new business. And there's a new proposed removal, item number 18. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding Great Lakes Water Authority February charges in the amount of $1,987,563.18. I would note for the residents that the total bill run total is only $2,754,450.51. So it represents a significant majority of the expenditure. My question is, have we begun to withhold the and put the money in escrow regarding payment to Great Lakes Water Authority pursuant to our resolution?
No, the resolution held that we would begin that effective July 1st when the new rates are kicking in.
All right.
Which will be the new rates from Great Lakes Water Authority. That'll be what the next.
Would the...I will suggest to the board that perhaps we should start the withholding sooner than later on the expenditures which are not incorporated in the proposed increase or the anticipated increase. Because there's, as I understand it, and the chair can correct me if I'm wrong, we're making payments to Highland Parks past due in defaulted water and sanitary sewer treatment fees.
Correct.
Currently.
Correct.
So a portion of this money is going towards that.
Right. The reason it became so public recently is because Brian Baker from the county made a point to point out to all of us, all communities who are members with the Great Lakes Water Authority, that as part of the new rates being proposed by Great Lakes Water Authority, again, effective July 1st, what our portions of that debt were. Prior to that, it was only known to a small group and it really wasn't pointed out during rate discussions. So it's possible, but we're gonna have to go back and figure out what our current amount is. Because I don't know that we know the exact percentage. We know it's somewhere around 2%, but I don't know the exact number.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Any other questions in the bell run? A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the previous meeting's minutes from April 6, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment. This is for agenda items only. If there is anyone who wishes to make a public comment, please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. If there are anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand and you will be called upon. I don't see anybody present. Roger, is there anybody digitally? Nope. Okay, moving on from public comment. The consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to a presentation, as discussed three months ago. Team Rowe is gonna give us an update on our grant progress, on our grant applications.
Good afternoon, Board. Good evening, Board. I...all of you have my update that I submitted for the agenda and for your board packet. Just wanted to point out a few things. The amount of funds requested this period, we've requested approximately $277,632. The bulk of this is the Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, grant. That will help to build the pathway between Macomb Corners Park, sorry, just got back from a track meet, so I'm not quite here yet. Macomb Corners Park, all the way here to the city center. We feel very confident about the, how that process is going. It's not a...it's a process, and I really stress that because we go back and forth between MDOT and SEMCOG, where we fine-tune our ask and for this funding. And we had a very productive meeting with them recently, and we're really positive that this will keep going forward. And we will hopefully get some news here shortly about that. We also applied for two grants, or we're waiting on two grants from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. One which will help to fund that pathway project and another which will help build out the tennis courts at Pitchford Park. Those are, those amounts are for $50,000 and $25,000. One for the former and one for the latter. In terms of working and moving forward, I had a really great meeting with, with the supervisor, the treasurer, and the new deputy supervisor, Jody Claycome, recently, I think it was last week, where we talked about how we can move forward with planning. What we've really discovered in this whole grant process over the last six months is that the, when you're searching for funding for these large dollar grants, especially through the state of Michigan, they, they obviously, they have deadlines and different things throughout the year, which is something that we have to adhere to. But also, their funding mechanisms are usually through the state budget. So, for example, the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, their budget won't be, they fund it, but they don't fund it until the end of the year. And that's when you find out if you get a grant or not, and then you don't get the grant funding for two fiscal years after that. So there's a lot of planning and advanced planning that we have to work on in order to identify projects that we will be in the pipeline, let's say, in the next two fiscal years for the township, and how can we obtain funding for those. So it's, it's been a process and it's been a really great, positive experience. We continue to work with organizations like Advance Macomb to identify funding for programs such as Pitchford Park and different things that are existing projects right now. We're also looking at updating the park plan that we have in place right now for the township. That park plan will expire at the end of the year of this year, and it's a five-year plan. And it, you have to have one in place in order to apply for certain state funding, such as the Natural Resources Trust Fund. So that should be identified as a priority to get done by the end of the year, so that that's in place to be replacing the old one. We also are hopefully looking into road safety improvements, different items, and working with SEMCOG again to find other grant opportunities. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe. Any questions at this time? Go ahead.
On the, on the pathway, which seems to be the one that looks like it could come.
Yes.
Would that come in one lump sum or in phases? How would that money be dispersed?
I believe that it is dispersed once the, once the work is done. I think you have to hit certain benchmarks and submit for approval. That's usually how these things work.
So we'd pay the contractor and then, and then the contract would be done and then we'd get the money from the grant?
Yes, I believe that is how it works.
All right, thank you.
I couldn't, don't quote me on that. It could be different. Typically, for example, the Natural Resources Trust Fund, you have to do the work within a certain timeframe and then they reimburse you for it.
Just trying to wrap my head around this.
Yeah, it is, it is a brave new world that we're in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Les.
Thanks.
Move to receive and file?
Support.
All in favor? Please vote.
You should just do it.
Just do it. All right. Prepared for that one, if we do it electronically, or you want to do it voice?
Unanimous consent.
Members, please vote. I'm sorry. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to receive and file the report. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. I wasn't prepared for that.
Neither was Ed.
All right, we're moving on to, we have three public hearings.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I move that we hold all three public hearings in conjunction, being that they all involve the same parcel of land. And that, so we hold them essentially as one item.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so I believe.
It's me.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. The HoCo Group has applied to the township for consideration of being granted speculative building status for 17201, 17243, 17279 Leonie Drive. The approval of this application and subsequent adoption of a resolution of support will enable a future tenant to apply for a tax abatement through the township and subsequently the state of Michigan. This opportunity will only be available to the first tenant to occupy the site, and should that entity choose not to do so or be a business that does not allow for a tax abatement, then the opportunity shall cease to be available. The township board has approved an industrial development district for this parcel, and all departments' reviews have indicated no objections to the petitioner's request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions right now for Clerk Posey? Okay. So, because we're holding them together, we're gonna hold all the hearings as one. So at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Time is 6:44 PM. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on these matters, please approach the microphone. Anybody who wishes to participate remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Is there anybody, Roger? No? Okay, no one wishes to speak at this public hearing, so we will close the public hearing. And the time is 6:44 PM. Okay, are we doing three roll calls separately still?
No, we can just list out the addresses. You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the speculative building application and resolution for parcel 08-17-344-027, commonly known as 17201, 17243, and 17279 Leonie Drive.
Is there a second? Support. Any discussion on the motion? Now, this is the pass the resolutions as part of these three items. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the resolutions for the parcels known as 17201 Leonie Drive, 17243 Leonie Drive, and 17279 Leonie Drive. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. Those resolutions are adopted. Moving on to item 12. Mr. DeCaro is joining us remotely. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. DeCaro, you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to enter into a contract for vending services at the Recreation Center, Macomb Corners, and Waldenberg Parks. An RFP was placed on mitten. Three companies put in proposals ranging from 37.5% to 43%. This would be a three-year contract with the option to renew for two additional years. All three companies were evaluated and interviewed. Best Vending receives the highest score from the panel. At this time, we are recommending we award the contract to Best Vending for three years, at 43% for the first year, escalating 1% for every year thereafter. I've included the bids and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions on the vending contract?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question to Mr. DeCaro. Are those percentages a percentage of profit or percentage of total sales?
Percentages of the profit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the vending contract. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to adopt a resolution for the Parks and Recreation Millage renewal on the August 2nd, 2022 ballot.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. DeCaro, you gonna address this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to place a Parks and Recreation Millage renewal on the August 2nd, 2022 ballot. As you know, the Parks and Recreation Millage renewed by the residents in 2000 for one mill is set to expire on December 31st, 2022. With the addition of the Recreation Center, Macomb Corners Park, and Waldenberg Park, as well as the hundreds of programs and the 15 free special events offered each year, we believe our department has been good stewards of the millage funds previously allocated to us. The requested renewal will allow us to keep pace as Macomb Township continues to grow. Furthermore, the funds will allow us to maintain and expand the high quality of Parks and Recreation services that our community expects and deserves. After much discussion with the full-time elected officials, we are requesting to place language on the August 2nd election to ask for a .75 renewal for 20 years. I've included the ballot and the resolution language to be approved. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Go ahead, Treasurer Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, thank you, Sal, for that explanation. I appreciate it very much. I think our, in discussions with our, some of my fellow board members and also with our finance department, we are in kind of a unique position, in a fortunate position as a township, in that a number of our debts in the form of bonds over the next few years are going to be paid off, the next immediate few years are going to be paid off, that will allow us to redirect some of the money that we're currently using to pay off bonds, including bonds like those that paid for the Rec Center, to then have some of those resources directed to, to dedicate toward park improvements. So essentially, while we are renewing this bond, or renewing this millage at a slightly lower rate, we should be able to invest more heavily. We will be able to invest more heavily into our existing parks and our upcoming parks, like Pitchford Park and Park and Recreation Programs. So I anticipate that despite the fact that we're actually gonna be asking for a little bit less from residents, we'll be able to do a lot more with those additional funds that are being freed up from the repayment of those past debts. So I'm, I'm excited about what our department will be able to do with some additional investment of funds and excited about our community's, you know, commitment to Parks and Recreation Programs. I think we have a lot to look forward to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt a resolution for the Parks and Recreation Millage renewal on August 2nd, 2020, on the August 2nd, 2022 ballot. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Caro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving on to item 14. We have a request to approve the purchase of some R900 radio read devices and meter components from Ferguson Waterworks in the amount of $90,319.89. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, good evening. So with the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Program you guys approved back in January, the requirement for this to work, every house needs an R900 air device on it. There are 800 that are left that have the old Raymar-style device on their home, so we need to change those out for them to function. Otherwise, when the system goes live, these homes will be estimated water bills, which we do not want. So we're requesting this so we could get those changed out, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Well, I understand from reading the materials in the packet that these, part of the devices are, the old devices are in the houses. Will the residents have to allow entry into their homes in order to make the changeover?
That is correct. We'll have to go inside the homes in order to change these out, but the goal is to put them on the outside of the house, so in the future, when they just, when they go bad in 15, 20 years from now, we can replace them without having to bother the homeowner.
And will the changeout be done in, in some type of schedule that, through the neighborhoods? Is that the way it's gonna work?
Yes, so we're gonna, we're gonna mail out letters in 100, a packs of 100, so we can isolate certain areas so that we can get 15-minute appointments, so we can get them done a lot faster. The goal is to have them done by August. So we're gonna, we're gonna email out letters every, every week, isolating certain areas and then targeting those to get them done in a more.
And do you anticipate delivery of the new units all in one lump lot or batch? And then be warehoused, and so there'll be no delays in the changeout?
Correct. We should get them all in one, in one order. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Trustee Cusamano. Any other questions? Okay. A motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the purchase of the R900 radio read devices in the amount of $90,319.89. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 15, as a request to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement to dedicate Garfield Road right-of-way and agree to a final just compensation for damages for parcel number 0820300011. Is there a motion?
So moved. Mr. Chair, I believe it's 001.
I'm sorry, 001. Thank you for the correction. A motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. As the boards are aware, we have been in the process of trying to acquire all the right-of-way to extend Garfield between 22 Mile Road and 25 Mile Road. This particular agreement that's on the board agenda tonight would be the northeast corner of 22 Mile and Garfield. It's actually the half-mile that goes from 22 Mile to, to the north. We've been working with a property owner for quite some time to work out an agreement because this is a unique situation in respect, with respect to the rest of the parcels that are along this stretch. This is still privately owned. It's still being used as an active farm. So there are some buildings that are in the way. There's some drive lanes. There's an active farming operation that's happening in the, in the property that's actually will be the right-of-way for the future road. So we've come to an agreement. This is the agreement that's before you. The amount that is listed in the agreement is for some fencing that will be done because of the proximity of the existing house and the farming operation to the road. There are some site improvements, the driveway that needs to be moved, the buildings that need to come down, loss of crops, attorney fees and whatnot. And the agreement also outlines when those things will be paid. So as, the first couple of things will be paid right-of-way, and then as these other items are taken care of, the township will continue to write the checks to reimburse the property owner for that work to be done. So there's also some comments in, in the agreement with regard to lateral fees for the future development of the property. But the main part of the agreement that the township is paying for is the damages for the road to go into the property. I should note that we're not paying for the actual property itself, the real estate. It's just the damages to the property that we consider, you know, the things that have to be out of the way so the road can be built. So with that, engineering and the township attorney have reviewed the document. We're recommending approval by the township board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. We got a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement to dedicate Garfield Road right-of-way and agree to the final just compensation for damages. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item is a request to approve an alter grade for Pheasant Run condominiums Phase 2.
Support.
Or so moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This is for, and actually for a detention basin associated with this development. The detention basin, though, is being built on a parcel that is adjacent to the development. The developer of this property owns the property next door and is in the process of developing that. So they're going for a regional detention basin in this case. It worked out better for both developments. So in, but in this case, we have to treat the detention basin as an alter grade because it's not on the actual development. So according to the zoning ordinance, the township board has to approve it. Engineering has reviewed it. It meets all of our requirements and we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the alter grade for Pheasant Run condominiums Phase 2. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 17, as a request to approve purchasing policy updates and corresponding travel policy of states. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Good, good evening, Board. In its continuing effort to, commitment to promote effective, professional, and consistent procurement of goods and services for Macomb Township, the finance department is proposing updates to the current purchasing policy. The updates to the purchasing policy include changes to the purchasing policy dollar value limit, linking the travel policy to the purchasing policy for the purpose of obtaining travel expense approval, improving efficiency of surplus property disposal for low-dollar value items. Also, in cooperation with the Human Resource Department, updates to the travel policy are being proposed such that the travel policy expenditure approval requirements are consistent with purchasing policy limits. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. I always ask when I was at the college, the reason why previous boards had done what they had done. Do we have any, what was the reason, or what would be the best guess, why the amounts were set for low-value purchases where they were? As, as the policy exists today?
Well, I can't guess why they were established where they were as it exists today, but I can tell you that I surveyed a number of communities, probably 20 to 30 communities. We are at the lower end with our limits where they are today. This puts us somewhere, you know, toward the middle, where wouldn't absolutely be, there's many communities that are much higher with their dollar value limits. But this doesn't exceed what other communities. but this doesn't exceed what other communities are doing. In fact, it just kind of bumps it up to the middle of what many of the communities are doing out of the ones that I surveyed.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have some concerns regarding the ability of the board to monitor expenditures of public funds and the expansion of those expenditures to not include review by the board. I will be asking the board, should this, I will be voting no tonight. But if, in the event that this passes, I'll be asking for a provision to be made by resolution of the board that all the expenditures, other than on the bill run itself, when the checks are written, be brought before the board in a form of an identification and a report for expenditures. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, Stacy, you might have to chime in on this, but the credit card report that you get, that's how the expenses are charged to the township from the employees, so you get a copy of all those expenditures in, with the bill run.
I understand that, but I understand as well that there's purchases that are proposed or anticipated under this new policy that are not purchases by credit card. Is, is, is that understanding inaccurate?
The, the board, the original list, additional list, and commercial credit card report is every expenditure that any department does. So the board is always approving those reports, I guess the, before the checks are written for the original and additional list. The credit card report was already put on their credit card, but there are no expenses that, whether it's a 50 cents or $50,000 that the board doesn't see, that doesn't show up on a report.
No, I, I understand, but I understand that there's, the mechanism by which it's reviewed and tested by the board won't exist for these purchases if they don't meet, if they're under this floor amount of $8,000. Is that?
Um, well, the checks and balances are, are still in place regardless of the thresholds. Ultimately, it starts with the department making sure that they're following the purchasing policy. Then it comes to us to either issue a check or approve their expense reports. And at that time, if we don't see a PO or a board approval, depending on what it may need, then we would kick it back to the department. Then, once we approve all of that, then it would go to you on a report to review, on, on the original list, additional list, or the credit card report. So we are still checking in finance before it even gets paid. Whether it was at the 5,000 or the 8,000.
I guess to point out, Trustee Cusmano's concern, it is true that, for example, the proposed limit for myself is going up. And anything under my own threshold, the board won't see until finance is requesting approval to pay it.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, a question for General Counsel. If we approve this and the supervisor commits to a purchase, we are obligated under Michigan law to pay that even though there could be concerns or objections after the fact.
Ultimately, you decide what bills are paid. So when it's on the bill run, if you have a question, it can be raised at that point.
Mr. Chairman, is, is anyone on the board who served longer than me recall what goods or services were received where the bill has not been paid other than, I think, in one instance, the Foster Legal Group? I believe that's the only one, and I defer to the recollection of members of the board with more seniority.
I don't recall a time that-
I think you're accurate there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As a follow-up, though, of course, any board member can raise a question on the bill run as to what a particular bill is for and why it's being paid. And you can remove it from the bill run for further discussion and/or action.
Mr. Chair, for a point of clarification, the, this policy change would not affect the bill run. Everything would be exactly the same. It would just affect how the purchases is being made, essentially. The authorization by the department head would increase from its existing limit to a higher limit. But all the procedures that are existing and in place, including the bill run as it's presented, and everything would not change.
Correct.
Then, this might be a question I'm not sure can answer. Does anybody know when that, our existing policy was established by a prior board? With the existing limits, was it 10 years ago, five?
I think it was around, between 2008, 2010. And none of the limits have been raised since then.
Okay.
I guess the, I'll chime in a little bit. The impetus, I think the impetus of this, because this came up in discussions during various projects that we've been working on here, is that how cost of going, going up and up? And the, the full process, I mean, we're effectively, we haven't been keeping up with inflation, I guess is the point I'm trying to get at. And the things that the board was buying in 2008 or 2010 for $5,000 probably cost $15,000 now. And so we're trying to create a balance point between effective operations and, and board approval where it's required. And Janet proposed these limits to me after doing research. They seem to be reasonable based on what our surrounding communities. I don't think they give any department head or myself, you know, there's no, I don't think there's a great risk of us squandering the opportunity or, or wasting money. And again, the board still has approval to pay, pay the bills, and can, if any department head or myself or anybody else who has approval ability can be called to question on what they've approved and, and why.
Mr. Chairman, I think Legal Counsel was trying to get the attention of the chair for a moment.
I was good. I'm, I'm good now.
Did I cover it?
You kind of did, yeah.
Yeah.
I have no other questions or comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a, my glasses back on. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchasing policy updates and corresponding travel policy updates. Members, please vote. Motion passes 6 to 1 with Trustee Cusmano voting no. Item 18 has been stricken, so we will move on to item 19. We have a request to appoint Lori Sharich to the McCombe, to the Clinton-McCombe Public Library Board. So move.
Second.
This is my request for the board to appoint Lori Sharich. Lori Sharich is, I interviewed her. I've spoken to her actually on a couple of different occasions. She has applied for other board positions. I have found her to be an accomplished professional with years of real-life business experience, and she will be able to bring that experience to the McCombe-Clinton Library. I found her to be an ideal candidate that will represent the interests of McCombe Township and our taxpayers very well on the library board, which, as we know, has a substantial budget and does some great work here in our community. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, if I can. Okay, and seeing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to appoint Lori Sharich to the Clinton-McCombe Public Library Board. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Moving on to item 20, we have a request to schedule the 2022-2023 McCombe Township budget, public, Township budget, public hearing for May 19th, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. and a second public hearing for June 8th, 2022, at the regular Board of Trust meeting, but, ah, can't speak tonight, Board of Trustees' meeting at 6:30 p.m.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to note that I'm, that the budget is an important template that we established for ourselves that, you know, kind of helps guide our actions for an entire year. So I am looking forward to the participation of the full board and any members of the public that would like to also attend in helping shape that budget.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Anyone else? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to schedule the two public hearings for the McCombe Township budget for 2022-2023. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And moving on to item 21, is an authorization to extend an, an offer of employment for the elections supervisor positions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. The McCombe Township Board of Trustees authorized Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for the positions of election supervisor. The HR department received nine applications for the position. Three candidates were invited to interview with the selection committee. The selection, selection committee consisted of Clerk Posey, Roger Cardamone, Mickey Todd, and Sherilyn Arf, and they are recommending James Allen for this position. If approved, it's contingent upon successful completion of all post-office requirements. And the effective date of this hire would be May 16th of 2022. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions?
Just for clarification, this is to fill a vacancy for a budgeted position.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone? A motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to offer the elections, Jim Allen, the election supervisor position. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Moving on to our second public comment of the evening. This is for non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room, and anyone who is participating remotely may digitally raise their hand. Is there anybody there, Roger? So nobody present? Moving on to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
I just quickly want to say thank you and congratulations to Lori and to James, I believe it was, on their new positions, and look forward to working with you, and thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you. Trustee Nevers?
Yes. Once again, I'm following Mr. Lucido here with a congratulations to our, our new library candidate there, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing, Lori. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Also to James Allen. Sounds like it's going to be a good pick. And I want to thank the, everyone that worked. I know they worked pretty hard in Park and Rec Millage. There was a lot of effort put in. You know, we just run it right, I don't want to say we're just running right through, but it went through smooth here. Let's say that. But there was a lot of work, a lot of decisions made behind the scenes. So I want to thank everyone involved in that, and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano.
Well, I would be remiss as not to say me too. Thank you for your service and look forward to working with all the new, the new hire and also with the new trustee on the board for library. I also want to say something. The, the board had to take some action recently regarding some employees in the, in the township. And I want the public to know that, in my estimation, this board is of the highest character and integrity, and that truth, honesty, dignity, and respect are the order of the day here. And I appreciate the consistent application of those principles by this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I echo the congratulations to our new library board member. It's a, it's a substantial budget operation there and a lot of responsibility. So we appreciate you taking that on behalf of this community. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to just comment briefly on the Parks and Rec Millage. You know, it's been a consistent effort, I think, by myself and the members of this board to try and do as much as we can to get the best value we can for the residents of this community. We're always looking at how we can do more, in many cases with less. And the fact that we are able to offer a renewal of the library millage at a, you know, slightly reduced rate, and yet commit to improvement in investing additional funds through some, you know, expiration of bonds and through other means, I think is an example of that commitment by this board to try and find a way to provide the best value we can to residents. How can we continue to do more with less? And it's been a challenge, but I think it's a commitment that we take very seriously. You know, how can we make life better for our residents? How can we do it as, as efficiently as possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too congratulate Lori. And welcome Mr. Allen to the Clerk's Department. We're very excited to have this addition join our team. He brings 13 years of experience in administration of elections, and I just think he will be a tremendous asset to our department. Also, with regards to the Parks and Rec Millage, I support our Parks and Recreation and senior programs full-heartedly. And it, it was a lot of conversations had, whether we just renew the millage for the one mill or we had the ability after taking a serious look at our resources, and we had the ability to reduce it just a little bit to our residents. But our commitment to our programs and to upgrades in our, in our parks still remains the same. So I hope our residents support our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I guess like everybody else, congratulations, Lori. We're looking forward to having you represent us in the library board. And it sounds, after speaking with Larry and Neil over at the library, they're just as excited to have you join them. So looking forward to that. Mr. Allen, we're eagerly await your arrival. The Clerk's Department is steadily preparing for this year's elections. I want to congratulate the Parks and Rec Department and all the other staff members who helped out on the Easter event this past weekend. A few of us, Trustee Lucido, myself, Treasurer Gillette, were able to participate. There were 600 people that came through the event. There was an llama on the loose. But overall, it was a great event. It was great to see everybody come out, and it's great to get to interact with the community. We don't get enough chances, you know, those of us who are working here to actually, you know, discuss things with our residents, and it's a great opportunity for everybody. So thank you for that. It turned out great. There are two events coming up I want to make note of. We are organizing a homeowners association presidents and officers meeting. It's going to be here at Town Hall on May 2nd in the evening, the purpose of which is to give those residents who are helping lead their communities kind of an open forum with some of the elected officials and a few of our department heads that, that we can get really good, effective two-way communication between them and us and see how we can help each other out in the future. And then the second one is our State of the Township is coming up. It's going to be at May 10th, on May 10th. It's a breakfast meeting at Sycamore Hills. Information for both of them are available on the supervisor's website, and, or you can call my office for additional information. I encourage the public to attend the State of the Township if you're able. It should be a lot of fun. With that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.